Just get that guy's attention. All right. Good evening and welcome to the Kingston School Committee on Thursday, January 18th, 2024. This meeting is being recorded and we will begin with a roll call. Let me begin with Mrs. Cannon.
Present.
Mrs. Coleman.
Present.
Mrs. Arietta.
Present.
Mr. Chican.
Present.
And Timothy Lewis is present. Okay, our regular meeting is beginning at 5:00 PM. Is there an opportunity to hear from any visitors? Okay, we don't have any visitors to hear from at this time, vote in person or remotely. The next item on the agenda is an executive session. Do you hear from any of the members for a comment, concern, or motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we adjourn to executive session pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 to conduct a collective bargaining session with the Kingston Teachers Association. Executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Kingston, the Teachers Association grievance. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating portion, excuse me, position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, and which is the approval of executive session minutes, August 21st, August 28th, and October 3rd, 2023, and to return to open session.
I second that.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Coleman, for the motion, and Mrs. Arietta, for the second. Let's do a roll call vote on that. Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Arietta?
Yes.
Mr. Chican?
Yes.
And Timothy Lewis is a yes. So at this moment, we will adjourn from our, or we will leave our open, regular session meeting and enter into executive session. Anyone not pertinent to the discussion, we respectfully ask you to dismiss yourself. Based on our discussion with council, we anticipate that the KTA president, vice president, grievance coordinator, and if you have an MTA rep, is welcome to stay as well. Thank you. We're re-entering our regular meeting. Again, this meeting is being recorded. The third agenda item is the approval of the regular minutes from December 4th, 2023. If there are any comments, questions, or concerns about that, please take the floor. If not, we can go right into a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the December 4th, 2023 Kingston School Committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay. No need for a roll call vote in this particular case. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Emily, that's five zero. Okay, next agenda item is the South Shore Children's Chorus Flyer Distribution Impossible Vote. Does anyone have any comments or concerns about the South Shore Children's Chorus?
I'm just curious if anyone knows, have we been asked to approve a flyer for them previously?
I'm not sure if they've asked us. They haven't, it hasn't come to me previously. I can't speak to a longer history. This is the first request that I have received. Thank you.
So let's ask Carrie on that one. Have you distributed flyers for non-Kingston or Silver Lake related activities extracurriculars?
That are not Silver Lake or Kingston. Not that are hot, but it's always Silver Lake or Kingston scores or...
In some capacity or another, right?
My question was actually going to be, if we approve this, does that add Kingston to the list? But then I'm like looking at it, and it isn't even a Kingston-based program. It's not asking for a Kingston-based program. It's asking for approval to send these flyers for these other four towns. Okay. Thank you.
Yep, that's my concern there. South Shore Children's Chorus is located in Quincy, Hanover, Sharon, and Bridgewater. There might be Kingston students that access this activity, but do we want, do we want to get into the practice of handing these out? That's a question for this committee.
I don't think so, because that could open up a whole can of worms right there, because there are so many activities on the South Shore that could be like, oh, let's set up all the schools to send home flyers.
Ducksbury Dunes.
I think that's a little...
All right, you get to sign, but can you please make sure your microphone's on?
Yes. I apologize. Do you need to repeat that?
Yeah, I agree with Megan. I don't want to open it up to everybody.
I think there's an influx of things that come home, and it's a lot of work for our principals to distribute that information, so I think we should be aware of what we're approving.
I agree, but I just feel this is inappropriate for us to send home in backpacks or post on our school social media.
Agreed.
All right, so if we are, if we're not interested in doing, there's no vote needed. Okay. So is there, is no motion relative to this flyer? Okay, no motion relative to the flyer. All right, the next agenda item is five, Teachers Corner. Looks like we have four, maybe more.
Not sustained.
If you'd like to address the committee and the public at large, we welcome you over to the podium to share all the good things going on at KI and KES.
Hello, could you just introduce yourself, tell you what building you're in?
Can I turn it on and so that people can... Yep, three lights on.
Thank you. So I am Elizabeth Cummings, I'm a first grade teacher in Kingston.
I'm Courtney Baveros, I'm a fourth grade teacher at Kingston Intermediate.
Yeah, so, like I was saying, we're going up to our 100th day, so very exciting time. The kids love it. We get to celebrate their hard work for the first half of the year and do a lot of celebrating. In first grade, we are dressing up as our 100-year-old selves, and we have teamed up with the Nathan Hale Veterans Outreach Program, and we're doing a donation project where we have 100 donations coming in per class, and we're going to do a little outreach bag, fill-up ceremony, and give them out to veterans. So we're very excited about that. And in kindergarten, they are learning about Martin Luther King Jr. and polar animals with new science experiments and creating eagles. And in second grade, the second graders just collected 100 socks, 200 socks, and they donated them to the community. And they are also working on their science curriculum and learning about Martin Luther King.
In third grade over at KIS, the third graders started off reading a story called "I Make the World a Better Place" based on the work of real students, and they made mini posters for their lockers showcasing their ideas to how they can make our school a better place. Fourth graders, right now through our collaborative classroom curriculum, are reading the novel Dragons in a Bag, and the students are loving it. They've been very engaged in the lessons, and they're eager to learn about the main character Jax and his journey. Fifth graders have also really enjoyed their mystery science kits through their science curriculum. They're enjoying the hands-on learning aspects and have been conducting experiments through, with chemical and physical changes, as well as earth science labs where they're studying the difference in the amount of salt versus fresh water on Earth. Sixth graders have had a very exciting last few weeks. The four-way team just recently went on their field trip to Gillette Stadium. They also, that also happened to be the day that Bill Belichick announced he was no longer going to be coaching the Patriots. One of the four classes were actually interviewed and featured on a local news station, and the team of three also attended Gillette last week. This field trip includes a helmet STEM activity and a tour of the Patriots Hall of Fame.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anyone who represents the PTO that would like to speak?
Not as an official PTO representative, but I would like to thank all of the nearly 70 volunteers, including Mrs. Doyle back there, that helped with the wrapping at the Kingston Mall, because the fundraiser raised about $10,000, net about $8,200 after all the expenses, and that's going to help fund all those field trips, hopefully for the remainder of the school year. So, thank you.
That's a good haul. All right.
And not to say, one other plug for the PTO, that their cupcake fundraiser's coming up at the end of the month.
Awesome.
That pulled in last year about $8,000, so it's a good fundraiser, it's paying for everything.
With inflation, it'll be nine this year. All right.
Your order's ready.
The field trips are going up, so that's the problem.
Thank you to the PTO. Administration, I'll turn it over to Dr. Carrie Whipple.
So value of month at KES this month is teamwork. So students each week receive positive office referrals as they exhibit that skillset during the school day. We are continuing to collaborate at KIS with our Bus Safe Ride Challenge, so buses with no write-ups do get recognized each month. We were picking little prizes for all the buses, but there was just too many, so now we pick out of a hat, and it's one or two buses. Kids get very excited. Our staff had continued to focus on data analysis and intervention, so our staff meetings, our grade level meetings are focused on just that. We just did benchmark assessments in December, so this week we met together, and next week we have data meetings, so we'll be looking at that data for the next few weeks and intervening. On the 22nd, we do have a community meeting planned. During that time, we meet with the, all the students per grade level, and that's when the teachers get together with the reading interventionists and look at the data to analyze that. And then we get to be with the kids for 30 minutes and go over our values of the month and expectations. This past month, we've had the middle school volunteers in, which is awesome. They go in, they read a book, they do a craft. The teachers love seeing the kids, the kids love seeing some of their siblings or neighbors, and it's a great way for the eighth graders to be role models as well. We have the Silver Lake basketball team who also came in in December. Tons of families were in, doing lots of different centers and academic activities. They all were mystery readers, so it's always great to see the community within our classrooms. The Winter Fest was amazing, if you were able to go. It was on a Saturday. There was a great turnout, lots of great crafts, holiday representations and games, so that was enjoyable. It's great that the PTO puts that on. We have our first, very, very first multicultural night, which is going to be on the 24th from 5:00 to 7:00. We have 10 families and staff members, and the Kingston Public Library, who are going to be presenting different aspects of culture within our school community. So what's cool is that we're going to be representing Poland, Haiti, Panama, Ukraine, Pakistan, South Korea, Dominican Republic, Spain, Brazil, Puerto Rico, and Ireland. So there'll be food, folklore, clothing, art, music, crafts, to represent the countries that all our students represent. So we're excited about that, so feel free to come by on the 24th from 5:00 to 7:00. This year, our reading team is doing this book recommendation bulletin board, so students are writing like peer reviews of books, and those are presented on the bulletin board, so kind of entices kids to take a look at like, oh, my friend read that book, let me try that book. And that's to try to continue to build a love of reading at home as well. So that's something that we're doing this year. On the 26th, we have our annual Lego Day, very exciting day. Classrooms are encouraged to use teamwork to create a Lego piece that represents kind of them as a classroom. It's pretty amazing to see what they come up with, and you'll see it on our Facebook pages, but it's pretty creative. Like, I don't know, some might, some do KES, but then some build a whole like community that represents who they are as just people within the classroom. So it's, it's pretty creative and awesome. We've been doing safety care trainings for initial and researchs this month, and next month we have safe routes coming to KES. They do a pedestrian safety, kind of mini-assembly with each class, 30 minutes at a time, and they go over a whole curriculum, and then the person who runs it is actually doing the crosswalks with them and talking about pedestrian safety. So we're excited to be able to do that again this year. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Mr. Retour?
Thank you. Good evening. Andy Materna, principal KIS. We are well on our way into 2024. I experienced my first snowstorm as a principal and power outage, and it was very exciting. Hats off to the students and the staff. Amazing how everybody came together, really showing me the spirit of KIS, people coming together and getting each other through a situation like that. We celebrated, and we actually had our band and chorus holiday concert took place on January 4th. It was a great turnout. Still impressed with the community turnouts coming to the events that we're having at KIS. Our sixth grade field trips that Ms. Baveros was talking about to Gillette, sixth grade went last Thursday and today to Gillette and engaged in some STEM activities. Our Eagle Wings, as part of our PBIS initiatives, have really taken off. Students earn Eagle Wings from any adult in the building, can give any student an Eagle Wing, and it revolves around our Safety, Ownership, Achievement, Respect SOAR initiative. And the students, they take these little tickets, they put their name on them, they put them in a jar, and there's a raffle, a weekly raffle, which students from each grade level get chosen to, from the raffle, to pick something from a school store that our PBIS group has put together in conjunction with school council. We, so Eagle Wings, our individual reward system. We have launched our classroom reward system, Eagle Bucks, which are jars which are being filled with red pom-poms for, for classroom participation things, and those are kind of run by teachers. And when the jar is filled, the classroom earns Eagle Bucks, which they can also spend at the school store as part of our, our school money Eagle Wings and Eagle Bucks. Last week, we celebrated our students for the first term, and we gave awards for leadership, kindness counts, our Rising Stars, our Most Creative, Awesome Attitude, Future Author, Future Mathematician, Future Historian, and Future Scientist awards in grade-level celebrations. These celebrations were electric. The students were so excited for one another to win these awards. Each homeroom chose awards, chose students to win these awards, and so there were a number of students that were receiving awards and being celebrated, and all the other students were just so happy and so excited that their peers were getting these awards. It was quite a thing to see. Our monthly meetings are wrapping up, or are starting up for the year. PTO monthly meetings are happening. Our, I have a scheduling committee that's resumed meeting focused on building a master schedule for KIS. School council is resuming its monthly meetings this month, and we're focused on school handbook. Student council has launched a door decorating contest, and the theme is class favorite, to be interpreted by each classroom. And student council has also established a student-versus-staff basketball game fundraiser at Silver Lake High School on March 6th. So some fun things to look forward to, and that's all I have for today. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. All right. Ms. Hickey?
Yes, I'd like to introduce our new Director of Finance and Operations, Sarah Hickey. She's here with us tonight. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Ms. Hickey, can you turn your microphone on?
Thank you.
All right.
Sorry.
There you go.
In your school committee digital packet, there was the financial report, and I would just like to point out that there's a, if you run down the right-hand column, there's some percentages. You'll notice that there's a deficit in indemnification, that's due to a change in provider. There's a deficit in the Kingston Elementary School substitute line. The budget for FY '25 takes that into consideration. The budget line wasn't big enough to, to cover what we have for this year. There's a deficit in the KIS custodial supplies line, which is...
I'm sorry, I wasn't asking you to turn on your mic, I was asking the woman, two years ago, you were like turning on her mic earlier. Sorry, so your mic is off right now.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
There's a little green light.
Yep, is the green light on?
Yes.
All right. Crisis averted. He gave us the thumbs up, you're good.
Okay, thank you. There's a deficit in the custodial supply line, which is absorbed within the custodial category, and there's a deficit in the special education transportation, and the budget for FY '25 takes that into consideration. Any questions about the financial report?
Just one, if I may. When you said the provider change and there's a deficit in the indemnity, is that...
Indemnification.
Okay, can you explain that?
Yes. So when the school committee operates as the Kingston School Committee, you are covered by insurance from the town, but when you operate as the Union 31, you are not, so we have a separate policy that covers you as a school committee for Union 31, and that policy is spread across the three different schools.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Hickey. Mr. Lynch?
Thank you. I have two, two items this evening for a quick update on curriculum instruction and assessment. We have, as part of our strategy for district improvement this year, we have a multi-tiered systems of support, district-wide steering committee, and I just wanted to thank the representatives from KES and KIS who are on that committee. We have Tim Coughlin from KES, the reading specialist, and Carrie Whipple, the principal from KES, and Chris Gagne and Ralph Crussey from KIS, serving on that committee. And as a district-wide group, we're working to make sure that we have support teams at each school, made up of teachers and interventionists, and we're trying to develop consistent interventions for academics, behavior, and social-emotional support. So we've had four meetings, we're developing action plans, and we're grateful for the efforts of the KIS and KES staff who are participating in that. The second agenda item is the MCAS vocal survey and possible vote. So one of our school committees in Union 31 has elected to have students who take the MCAS participate in the vocal survey. It's come to my attention that the state offers the vocal survey at the end of the MCAS. Inside of your folder, you'll see the FAQs along with copies of the survey. It's relevant to Kingston students in grade five and grade four who are asked to take the survey at the end of the MCAS. It is not, so I wanted to bring that choice to the Kingston School Committee to see if that would be an opportunity that the school committee would like the students in grades four and five to take advantage of. Typically, it asks about the school environment, whether students feel supported, safe. You can see all the questions inside there. The state then compiles, anonymously compiles that information for the school to give sort of a school profile, so the principal and staff can see that. And then a state report is created that sort of pulls together all the information from the state. It seems, depending on the grade level, that about almost 80% of eligible students would participate in that. Currently, it seems like, it seems to be that the district practices to have students not complete it, so because we have one of our districts completing it, we wanted to bring that opportunity to you to see if that is something that you would like the students to participate in. So I'm presenting that, presenting that choice to you, and would be happy to answer questions if you have it.
So, couple questions relative to that. When students complete the MCAS, it's probably a two- or three-day section, that is presented to them at the conclusion of, say, the math portion, then do they have the option to not do it as a student?
Students would have the option not to do it.
All right. And then how quick, how quickly is the data compiled by DESI and then returned to the building principals? September?
I believe so, and the state report comes out even later than that, so. If I could add something that you made me want to remind the committee of, is that we do have a survey policy that's in process, and we would make every attempt to continue to adhere to our policy around surveys and have verified that it would be technically possible if we notify a family that they would not like their child to participate. We have determined it would be technically possible to make sure students don't take it if it is the parent's choice that they would not take it. So, sorry, I neglected that part of it.
No, I, I follow. So I'll turn to Carrie and Andy to see, to see where, I'm looking for feedback on this one. Anytime we solicit data from our students, we've got to then do something with that data. Do you envision, based on the questions that will be asked, that you'll get helpful and necessary information from this data to then take steps to, to support our students?
I could speak from previous years, but yes, I think any information is always community lightning. I think 9% could not be useful, but 10% could, and like 10% could be helpful, which can do practices, but I don't see that, because we don't do all that, so.
Yeah, I would agree with the information that we can gather from students, especially with information regarding the school and how things are operating.
So you'd be in support of having your students fill it out?
Yes.
If their families so choose?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Retour our question? Outside of this specific survey, are there any other surveys that would be put out just within KIS that would answer these types of questions?
So we currently complete a survey. I don't know how aligned those questions are to the MCAS questions. If they're similar, do the same.
Sorry, Andy. Give him an elbow next to him.
So we currently run the Panorama Survey twice a year, and we utilize that data. I don't know how aligned the Panorama Survey questions are with the MCAS questions, so...
Can you give us an idea of the scope of the Panorama Survey? Like, is it questions about like school climate, bullying, things of that nature? I'm noticing like those are some of the things.
If I could, if I could answer a little bit to that, the, there is, there's a lot of overlap between the questions. I'm not exactly sure about the bullying question.
I was just using that as an example, but...
Yeah, but one thing I would say that's different is that there are, like, there's a well-being strand in the Panorama Survey, and there's, it sort of color codes each of the topics, so it would allow you to see a little bit more information about the student. It doesn't tell you how that student answered the question, but it would say like, you know, the student might have, be recommended for a couple of SEL interventions. We would not get that level of data from the state survey because it's completely anonymized and doesn't have that like sort of depth behind it, so there's not a one-to-one correspondence, but they both check on like well-being and what kind of supports the student might need, and the Panorama Survey offers more detail, and in my opinion, would be more useful to a teacher because they would see some information about their student.
Yes, Jean?
Okay, I have a few questions, just because this was discussed last week at the Silver Lake Regional Committee meeting, in which case the committee voted no for the vocal survey, but I believe Mr. Lynch has just answered one of the concerns, which was, would allowing this survey adhere to our policy on surveys, which is to give families an option to opt out, and how would that be monitored? It puts a lot of, I think, responsibility on the classroom teacher to know which students have to close their, I guess, testing device, whether it's the Chromebook or by paper, and not complete the survey. So that's one of my concerns. The other concern, and I guess this kind of speaks more towards what we're going into, which is the budget presentation, is I don't think it's fair to ask our, I know more so at the elementary level, to ask for the children that have accommodations for testing to complete then a 26-question survey at the end of the MCAS. I think that our resources could better be used elsewhere than to have the students with the one-on-one para have to read a survey question, and I also think that could lead, especially where there's some questions in there that are pretty sensitive to the child. He, he or she may have just experienced some testing anxiety, and now they get to the end where they're like, do I feel supported? I don't know. Like, I think that those kinds of things could be, I think, stress, stressful for fourth and fifth graders. So I do just have some concerns about adding something to a test. One of my questions that I had asked the other day, and I don't know if Mr. Lynch has the answer today, but do we know that when the child is taking the MCAS and they're following along and it says like 46% completed or 76% completed, if this optional survey at the end there is included with that percent completed? Because you don't want a child to be taking a test and go, oh, my God, I have, I'm only at 70%, and then find out that the last 10% was actually a survey, because that's not important to the MCAS data that I guess also needs to be collected. So is there a way to differentiate between the timing of the two tests?
So this, my response just refers to the last part of what you said, the first two parts make sense. We reached out after the Silver Lake meeting, I reached out to DESI and asked the question. The survey appears as its own module, so it would not be calculated in any sort of percentage. The survey appears as its own module, so it would not be calculated in any sort of percentage. And we would be able, as we administer the test, we would be able to sort of close the module for students that weren't going to take it. You are correct that that's another responsibility that either the classroom teacher or the test administrator would need to be aware of. So, I agree, it's an additional responsibility that would be part of the testing protocol.
So, Ryan, is that how, is that what you mean by technically you could prevent the children from taking it?
Right. It would need to be, somebody would need to go in. Once the list would be determined of students that were identified whose caregivers would not like them to participate. It would need to be, that module would need to be closed by the test administrator so that they, so that they wouldn't have that additional module, correct?
And could I just ask a follow-up? I know that there were, I thought there were some surveys that were tied to funding before. Is this tied to any funding for the district, if we allow it or not?
This is not my, I do not believe that there's any link between funding and completion of the surveys.
Just a quick question. So, this panorama is done twice, and this would be a third time we're going in and surveying the kids on this particular type of topic. Okay.
That's correct.
May I ask a follow-up to the, when the data is collected? I guess one of my concerns is if you do a spring testing, and the child, say, has, just got a new sibling or something, has a change in environment, and then by September, we're saying, "Oh, my gosh, this child needs intervention services," that, I feel like that...
Well, remember, it's anonymous.
I know, but I guess there was, is that the other survey that we were saying that could identify those students? The Panorama one? Okay, thank you.
And you want to, I mean, best practice, would you do it a couple of times a year so you can gain more information based on where that student is at this juncture versus that juncture? I'm, indifferent might be the best way to describe it on the MCAS survey. The building principal would be in support of it. I agree that every time we bring in data, it can be helpful. It's anonymous, our families have the right to opt out. Students could even choose, if their family allows them to take it, not to complete it. So, I, again, indifferent might be the word, but I don't see any backdrop or downfall of us approving it and having our kids have the opportunity to get it, and our school receive more information. That might be helpful for us in school improvement going into a new year, so.
I am not in favor of this for the reasoning, if there's significant overlap between this and the Panorama Test.
Megan.
Hers is on.
All right, keep going.
And for the purpose of, I know that there has kind of just been ongoing discussions just about surveys within the community, that the students are taking. And although this may provide some additional information, I'm not sure that it would be to the point of necessary in asking these students to complete one more survey in addition to MCAS. Just, it's a lot, it's stressful, and this is just one more thing. I think when they, I would imagine that they would take this after the second portion. And I think at that point in time, especially in the younger grades, that they just want to be done. And I think that that is age-appropriate.
Michael?
So, if, to Megan's point or concern, maybe, like, at the end of the MCAS, could a student who was going to take the survey just decide not to?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Well, we have a, let's see where it goes. I make a motion that we approve the MCAS survey for our students to take, acknowledging that parents have the opt-out clause, and that students, even if their parents, caregivers allow, they do not have to take it.
A second?
So, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Chican?
Yes.
Mrs. Cannon?
No.
Mrs. Coleman?
No.
Mrs. Arietta?
No.
Mr. Lewis is a yes, so the motion falls, three to two. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other? Ryan?
That's it, thank you.
All right. Dr. Prue?
So, tonight for your district update, in your packet, you will find October 1 enrollments, which have been updated to reflect the integration of pre-K into the numbers for Silver Lake. The commissioner has approved the updated regional agreement with the inclusion of pre-K as a Silver Lake program. And for that reason, these materials are in your packet. You can also see the difference of what the enrollment for the different towns in Silver Lake would have been had pre-K not been accepted into the Silver Lake regional agreement. So, those are there for your review. In terms of the school year calendar and possible vote, we have a draft calendar, which has been approved by the other school committees. I want to point out a few changes to this year's calendar. You'll notice that Professional Development Day on September 3rd is an in-service day. Some years, when it's, when we don't have elections in our schools, we put this in-service day after the February break. But in order to accommodate local elections, we're asking for the Professional Development in-service day to be on September 3rd. And then, the other thing I wanted to draw your attention to is that we are starting December break. We propose starting December break on December 23rd through January 1st. You'll find that some school districts are going into school for one day on December 23rd. Other districts are not. To me, it didn't make a lot of sense to open up the buildings and schools for one day. And so, I'm proposing that we start the December vacation on Monday, December 23rd for that reason.
I just have a question about that. If there were school, would it be a half-day on the 23rd, if they were to have it? Isn't it typically a half-day the day before?
I think a couple of years ago, the Friday before vacation was a half-day. So, I think it depends on the contractual language, and I'd have to look at that.
Okay.
All right. I agree with you. There's no need to bring the staff in on the 23rd.
But if it was a half-day, it would maybe be less expensive.
Right. Well, right, if it's a half-day, you're gonna, you're not gonna...
I think you'd have low attendance, too.
No, good call, Dr. Prue. So, Halifax and Plimpton have approved it?
And Silver Lake.
And Silver Lake. So, it's up to us, guys. Any questions, concerns on this, I think, well-thought-through calendar? All right.
I will make a motion that we approve the current draft calendar for the 2024-2025 school year.
All right. I think Tricia beat you by a syllable. All right. Okay, Mr. Chican, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes, to approve. Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Jeanie?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
And Tim Lewis is a yes. All right, good job, doctor.
So, is this officially official now? Everybody has approved it?
Yes.
In theory?
Unless something comes out of the whisper.
Yeah, okay.
So, the next item is our preliminary budget presentation. So, at this time, I'm going to ask that our budget presentation be represented on the screen, not only for our audience here, but also for our viewers at home. This is, in fact, our preliminary budget for FY '25. And every year, we begin usually in October, November, by first asking our principals to reach out to the staff, their departments, to find out what materials they need for the upcoming school year. And in November, you may recall that we had Dr. Panarese present for special education to provide us with an overview. Our Director of Technology, Steve Pello, presented for us. And in addition, we had Melissa Farrell present curriculum items for consideration for the upcoming school year. Next slide, please. Our goals remain consistent in terms of making sure that we're supporting the academic and developmental needs of our students, maintaining appropriate class sizes, considering and responding to the physical conditions of the town. And for that reason, we have asked our principals to prepare a level services budget. What would it take to maintain the current program structures and supports in each of our schools as they currently exist? And also, asking the principals to keep in mind the alignment with the strategy for district improvement and how this budget will help us to meet our goals. Next slide, please. So, thank you. This year is a, there are a number of changes to the budget, and I'd like to try to go through some of those as clearly as possible for you, recognizing that we will revisit some of these issues in additional slides. But I want to give you the big picture, and then we'll work through some items in more detail. So, in the past, out-of-district tuitions were charged to the elementary budgets. Not only elementary out-of-district, but secondary out-of-district. In the past, Silver Lake Elementary programs were referred to as Silver Lake Elementary programs. And we worked with the Department of Education, and they have given us until June to correct that structure. And as part of that, we had presented to the towns integrating pre-K into our Silver Lake agreement, because that is basically how we had been functioning with this particular program for decades. We have had numerous special education revolving accounts. We had a curriculum coordinator that has, we currently have a curriculum coordinator at the elementary level who is currently under a Silver Lake contract, which will need to be addressed this year. And we have traditionally voted three lines, regular, special education, and out-of-district vocational in our budget process. So, in meeting with the Department of Education, we met with members of school committees and representatives to move forward and present to the towns, considering pre-K as part of the Silver Lake. The towns passed the regional amendments. And so, pre-K moving forward will be a Silver Lake expense. Silver Lake positions in the elementary schools will need to become school or town employees. And the curriculum coordinator is to be determined, in terms of what town. But it is our recommendation that the Silver Lake programs become Kingston programs, given the fact that the majority of students in our Silver Lake programs are from Kingston. This is separate from the pre-K program. That has already been determined by the towns and will be part of the regional agreement. We will also need to find a town to host our curriculum coordinator and work out an agreement with the other two elementary districts in terms of the reimbursement to Kingston for that position, should Kingston take on that position as well. Out-of-district special education tuitions for pre-K in 7 through 12. We learned this more recently with our meetings with the Department of Education, that even though this is how it has been done in Silver Lake for decades, this is not how it should be done. And so, this must be a Silver Lake expense per the Mass Department of Education. Extended school year, which had once been taken care of in part by grants and revolving account, will now be part of each school's budget. Special education grant will now be used for out-of-district tuition costs instead of staffing. Special education revolving accounts will no longer be necessary in many cases. The special education revolving account for pre-K will continue because we have peers who pay a tuition, and therefore, we need a mechanism to collect those tuitions for that program. Shared cost positions will be paid according to the regional agreement percentages. And a plan for circuit breaker in FY '25 must be agreed upon with the Department of Education. It is our understanding that not only will the elementary schools be able to apply circuit breaker for their allowable expenses, but Silver Lake will now be able to apply circuit breaker for allowable expenses. So, the amount of circuit breaker that the towns receive will also be different moving forward. So, let's talk about special education changes first. Pre-K, they will be still housed in Kingston, and they will be, as they have been, continue to pay a fee for the use of that space. Tuitions, transportation, and its own program budget will appear in your budget just as KIS or KES would appear. These changes will appear now in the Silver Lake budget. They will not appear in the Kingston budget. Out-of-district tuitions for students in Grades 7 through 12, transportation for students in Grades 7 through 12 will be removed from the elementary budget and will now appear in the Silver Lake budget. So, as you can imagine, these amounts will represent a significant increase to Silver Lake, just as they represent a significant decrease to Kingston. But nonetheless, Kingston will still be assessed through the Silver Lake budget for out-of-district students, tuitions, and transportation. Circuit breaker reimbursement will no longer, for Kingston, will no longer include pre-K and out-of-district secondary. We anticipate circuit breaker will be about seventy percent. Tuition reimbursement for K through 6 will be approximately $417,000. This offset has not been taken. That's what we, that's a rough estimate. So, we're not confident that we're, we can take an offset for this amount. Typically, in the past, we have taken about half of that to apply to the upcoming year.
All right, I follow what you're saying. Got it.
Regular day will represent a 9.03% increase of $925,007. Special education reflects a 19.38% decrease of about $1,406. There's an extra zero in there, I apologize for that, $649. This represents staff moving from the revolving accounts in Silver Lake to the local budget. Tuition and transportation increases are included. The total budget decrease of 1.13% represents about a $183,000 decrease. While this may appear good for the Kingston Elementary School budget at this time, the reality is that the Silver Lake assessments will be going up. Payroll staffing now represents 72% of the regular day budget.
Can I ask a question about the K, the circuit breaker? Maybe this is offline, but last year, we had this surplus of like 200. Is that included in that number, or is that like, the 417 is what we expect this year? Doesn't involve the 253 or something like that we did last year for the budget?
So, we applied circuit breaker this year. And I'm...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, changes, some of the highlights, changes or impacts to the Kingston budget. The following positions will no longer be Silver Lake-funded. That represents $922,511. At KIS, you'll be incorporating, in this preliminary budget, we have included the following positions. Two special education teachers, 10 paraprofessionals, and a .5 speech-language path... speech-language pathologist. We wanted to, for this process, move all of these positions over to keep track of the positions, also showing you the potential impact. At KIS, we also moved over two special education teachers, one behaviorist, seven paraprofessionals, and one clerk. However, it is our belief at this time that we, based upon the needs of the students, we will no longer need a behaviorist and potentially a clerk at Kingston Intermediate School, now that the programs will be Kingston. So, they are currently in the budget, but they are an area that we believe we could reduce the budget by. We have added the curriculum coordinator to the Kingston budget. That is currently where the curriculum coordinator has an office, but again, that's just a placeholder. That has not been decided by the school committee or the joint committee, and we wanted to point that out to you. We will, since there is no longer a revolving account, we are also adding one special education Kingston Intermediate School teacher. It's important to point out that the regional agreement doesn't lay out these changes. The reality is, is that the conversations that occurred about our practices with the Department of Education are leading to additional changes in the way that we set up or structure our mechanisms for paying for these things. So, for example, if we no longer need a revolving account, it means that this particular person who was paid out of a revolving account will now need to appear in your budget. But that's not because we added pre-K to the Silver Lake budget, I guess is how I'm, I'm trying to explain that. The following positions will no longer be grant-funded, and that's because the grants, the 240 grant in particular, is going to be used to defray the cost or to offset the out-of-district tuition's cost. You'll still get that amount that would have been paid for salaries, but now it's going to be used to offset the tuitions. So, no longer grant-funded that you're going to see in your budget are two one-on-one paraprofessionals, and we're estimating preliminary shared cost contracts. Remember, these are just placeholders. The joint committee has not negotiated or updated contracts for a number of positions, so this number could change. But we're showing that as a 1.28% decrease of about $8,589. The extended school year costs that are coming into the Kingston budget: $234,558 for program and tuitions, just for extended school year, and just for extended school year transportation, about $34,000. The decreases to the Kingston budget will include taking out the out-of-district placements for pre-K in grades seven through 12. Those are moving to the Silver Lake budget. That includes tuition of about $2.2 million, transportation of $555,000, for a total of $2.759 million moving to the Silver Lake budget. Previous grant funding for staff will now be paid for, will now pay for out-of-district tuitions, and that'll be an offset of about $144,056. That offset, my understanding is, has already been taken-
Yes.
-in the budget before you. So that particular offset was taken. This exact offset may change depending on the allocation of the 240 grant in particular. 262 is for pre-K, so that, that should not appear there. I apologize, this was turned into a PDF, so you don't have the correct spacing for this, this slide, but the preliminary budget for FY25 includes a 5% increase for utilities, that's an estimate. The substitute line was increased and does include our current building-based substitutes. Shared cost contracts have not been finalized. Homeless transportation is level-funded. It's at $50,000 for the two schools. There has been some resource allocation on the, particularly on the part of the two building principals. You'll see some line items that have either gone up or down, and they will speak to you about any significant changes tonight. There are no known retirements at this time, so no reductions have been taken in that area. For out-of-district vocational, Kingston currently has five students and programs. There have been eight placements budgeted due to known additional applications. We will not know the complete number until April 1st. This number could grow. Not included in this budget are the additional staffing requests that you will hear from the principals tonight.
Could I stop you, I'm sorry? If, now that special education for students seven and up will be now consumed by Silver Lake, if a high school student goes to be out-of-district for vocational purposes, the elementary budget will pay for it?
So apparently, the, the rules for out-of-district vocational, the laws, the regulations-
Okay.
-are different.
Yeah, got, yeah, I'm sure there's a reason for it, I just need to understand.
Right. No, it's a good question. We, we asked the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that's why originally, decades ago, it was assumed that the same could be done for out-of-district placements in special education. Not included in this budget are the additional staffing requests that the principals will present, potential enrollment increases. For example, pre-K can, can be sometimes tricky to estimate. Our principal does a great job of encouraging people to enroll early and to get accurate numbers, but as you know, things can change and our numbers can shift. And then, we have not taken a circuit breaker offset, so that's to be noted. So now, I'm going to ask Principal Whipple to please approach the podium and share information about KES.
All right, so for, these are the, the three areas that have some notable increases. So for classroom supplies, we used to have a whole room of paper that we have used, completely, almost all of it, so we haven't had to order certain paper. And if you've been in elementary school, you'll see that there's certain special paper. It's not just your typical, like, college rule line paper, but it's a little bit more expensive. So, we have to go out and purchase significant more paper because we just went through everything. Certain items like scholastic news have really risen in price, and those are things that our teachers use every day and are really beneficial. And just general increase in supplies, so that's why you'll see the teacher supply lines has increased, and it's roughly, when you look at the whole number, it's $140 a year per child. Special education, some testing materials. We are adding a, a different avenue for teachers to be able to test students. It includes iPads and some other software, so that's what that increase was. And then, facilities-related, our shop door is a single door. You can't get through anything with a pallet, so our goal is to eventually be able to do a double door, so that we can use the pallet and bring things through to cut down on time. If there are questions about those?
May I?
Yeah, please.
When you say $140 per student, do you know what that is typically a year, because it under-stuck out?
Microphone needs to be turned on.
Thank you, sorry. When you say $140 per student, I like the way that that's broken down, because I bet each student uses way more than $140 in printing costs per year and stuff, like if you calculate, like, how colleges use to do it. But, I guess I'm wondering, like, do you know what that typically is per year?
Last year was about $121, I think.
Okay, and you're saying last year, you had this-
And we had-
...room of paper, though.
Exactly, yeah.
And now, we've gone through that-
All of it.
...storage.
All of it, yeah.
Thank you.
And we try to just buy what we need. We don't overbuy, so that we have storage rooms filled with stuff. We don't have space, so we try to keep what we need, kind of, try to be a day ahead at least, but, you know.
Thank you.
All right.
Is there any que, okay. Let's keep going.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is just our enrollment. I just took the last five years and took an average, and that's where you, sorry, actually for kindergarten, you'll see that, but the, the, we're looking at potentially 517 for next year, for a total. But like, like Dr. Prue said, it is really hard to determine kindergarten enrollment. We, oftentimes, it's the last day in August, we're getting that sometimes, you know? So if we look at the additional staffing proposal Dr. Prue had mentioned, our Silver Lake going over to Kingston, we are looking to open up a special care classroom. We have some students who require a different type of learning environment that's not within the general ed setting, or even in our current programs that we host. Typically, these students have gone out-of-district. We have a population now, and it'd be wonderful to even bring back our students from out-of-district. So we're looking to hire one special ed teacher for that special care program, two paraprofessionals, one nurse, because they're medically, their students have some medical diagnoses that need support through a nurse, and specialized equipment. So, it's about 275 to get started up that program within our building at KES, within the community that these students live in, or potentially Halifax or Plimpton to be tuitioned in. And you can see the average cost for out-of-district, how much that is per student and transportation I'm still going to go on record saying I really want a full-time music teacher, so that would be .4, to add to my current .6. Having that .4 music teacher would be huge for us, because we're also seeing some of our special needs students struggle to access the specials. So right now, we're revamping schedules to see if we can do some kind of reverse inclusion where the specialist finds a block of time to go into the classroom. Honestly, just because the seating isn't appropriate in some of those rooms, tabletops are too high, but they need, like, more adaptive PE. So, currently, right now, I can do that for the three specials that I have, but I cannot do that for music, because the schedule is completely full between KES and KIS. In addition to that, would help us to have some common planning blocks, so we can collaborate more on co-teaching efforts. These are both attached to our strategic objectives, number one and two, creating those relationships, building and communicating effectively, holding high standards, like, I go back to those students accessing the specialists, like, that's priority. They need to be able to access those specials every single day, and creating an inclusive environment for all. Are there any questions for me, KIS?
Yeah, Carrie, can I ask you a couple of questions? Going back to your special care classroom of five to six students.
Yep.
Are, are you proposing this additional position and the additional staffing for five or six students that you currently have placed in your building?
I would say three are currently placed in my building.
Okay, then, then presumably, three others are Kingston residents that are out-of-district placed.
Yeah, I just, I want to be mindful, I can't share too much, I don't want people to be identified, so-
Not asking you to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
So-
But I'm, so, you have three students in-house that could benefit from this placement. We go through the process, is there a possibility that a parent could then, because they have, they have an abundance of rights as parents of individuals of special education, that they could put a stay put on the current placement that they're at? So that if they're out-of-district placed, could they, and we recommend that they be placed in one of our buildings, in one of our individualized program, that, that they could deny that placement?
So, our students right now, three, five, however many students, do not have an out-of-district placement.
Right.
They have an in-district placement, so their stay put is in-district.
Yeah.
Regardless of what's rejected. Parent can always request an out-of-district placement, and the team, that's a team decision, and it's based on data and needs, and our ability to actually meet the needs of a student, make the student whole during the day, and provide access. The problem that we, we have is that we have parents from, that have out-of-district students going to out-of-district schools that want their children to come back, but we don't have programming to support that. I have two children right now that are out-of-district, that their parents want them back in this district. They don't want to send their children on a bus for an hour to a specialized school, so we have to respect their requests. So, I have like, the opposite, where parents want in-district, and they want their children with medically fragile needs to come back to their district, within their community and within, closer to them. So that's, that's the reason why we're having this type of program. Normally, what would happen is, we would try to fit our students into a certain sub-separate program or a different type of program that we have now. We want to be able to create a program that will actually be specific to the individual needs of students with complex disabilities.
Okay, so we have, give or take, numbers in-building that would benefit from this setting, and then you're saying you are aware of other students who would benefit from this program and that would come back into the district, thus saving the district and providing a opportunity for kids to learn in their home district with their same-age peers?
And Bourne, the director in Bourne, has reached out to me, because she has students, one or two students that have the same need, but she doesn't have programming. She's interested, and Carrie's talked about Plymouth as well, so there's the opportunity to fill that classroom, perhaps not with our own children, but with communities.
Okay. Megan has a question.
Sorry, I'm just wondering, excuse me, because one of the things mentioned about this specific classroom would be medically fragile children, we don't currently have a program at KIS that would accommodate those students, do we?
Not yet.
So, okay, so my question, I guess, is, if we were to implement this classroom at this time, is there a request that will be coming down the pipeline to implement?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And all the way up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for me?
Just one regarding the .4, because I know how last year we have discussed-
Jean, check that mic again.
Thank you, sorry, I had it turned it off. Regarding the .4 music teacher, one of our concerns, Mr. Materner, just so you're up to speed, is if we are to make Mrs. S. or that position whole for KES, there would be a need over at KIS for additional time to continue with instrumental learning. So, it's kind of a twofold for us, it's not as easy as saying, it is, I guess, as easy, but there's budget concerns in both schools, and I think that that would be my concern again with, I think it would need to come as a joint proposal, I think, to, to kind of make it make sense for the budget.
Yep.
So, thank you.
I just, I don't know if this is a question or a thought on what Jeanie just said, but in theory, if we were to approve the .4, so now you have a full-time person, and if Mrs. S. were the person to fill that position, we still have budgeted, though, for somebody-
It's 1.0.
To teach band?
It's 1.0 for band and music between the two buildings, so if it became-
So her .4 currently is at KIS?
Did you try it again?
Sorry, sorry. We would- Serious talking.
It would be, and, and Andy might have some other requests, too, so I'll let him go, but technically, based on what we talked about last year, the 1.0 would be KES, and then KIS would require a higher of at least .4 for the band. But I'm not sure .4 is really enough for the band.
What?
What's this?
Oh, so, right, I'm saying, but technically, it's .4 right now.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Yep. Anything else? No, okay.
Mr. Materner?
Thank you very much. I'll go through the additional needs for KIS. First, we'll start with the notable, I'd like to start off by saying, I want to thank the administrative team for all the support in helping me get to this, this level with the proposed budget, and all the time and effort that everybody's put into supporting me. I want to thank you guys all. Thank you very much for all your help. Appreciate it. The KIS notable increases and decreases, classroom-related, I broke it out into classroom-related and then facility-related. The classroom-related is, it starts with a tuition reimbursement increase of $3,600. In looking into an increase of tuition reimbursement, this is a contractual obligation that's split between KES and KIS, where we have a cap of $25,000 between the two buildings. So, in splitting the values between KES and KIS- So in splitting the values between KES and KIS, KIS would have a fifteen thousand dollar cap for tuition reimbursement. And that's the rationale behind that thirty-six hundred dollar increase.
May I just clarify that by tuition reimbursement, we're speaking about teachers who choose to take, um, continuing education, not student tuition.
Correct, yes, yes, tuition reimbursement for staff members. Yes. Uh, another notable increase is for textbooks and instructional software of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. This is for renewal costs of texts and online subscriptions. In the facility related, our supplies at KIS under the principal line is a decrease in four thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, last year that funding was in the line allocated towards, um, radios and those radios were purchased and we don't need those radios, so it's, it's something that has been purchased and does not need to continue to be purchased from year to year. Under the custodial services, eight thousand dollar increase. This is due to the actual past costs where there was funding for about eight thousand dollars a year for custodial services, which the actual costs were upwards about sixteen thousand dollars. So I'm looking at that increase to, um, cover, um, past costs. There's a fifteen hundred dollar decrease, uh, through working with the CTE program and Elliot Glass. We have, um, worked our tractor service with the CTE program. Um, so all, all tractor services are being completed through the CTE, uh, program at Silver Lake. So that's a decrease in that. If we look at the historical KIS enrollment, um, we're showing upticks. And the projected value of about six hundred and forty students is, um, a significant increase over the past five years. For the next slide, the projected, oh, you missed one?
Yes.
Sixteen shows it's empty.
There's a slide that's not here which looks at projected class size comparison. I believe it's slide sixteen.
Can you see it on your computer?
I can see it on mine.
I can see it on mine, I was gonna give you if you needed it, but okay, go ahead.
So this compares grades three through six, the student values, the teacher numbers, and then the class size averages. Uh, for the projected value with the uptick of students in grade three increasing, I show a comparison um, between having seven teachers or eight teachers, which we'll then go into the next slide. So currently our averages range from twenty-one to twenty-three students per classroom. I'll try to explain the slide that I'm looking at. Um, the projected values of students, we'd like to maintain the twenty-one to twenty-three average class size. Now in grade three, if we maintain seven staff members, that class size would bump up to approximately twenty-five students per class. If we added a, uh, one teacher in grade three, it would maintain the twenty-one or twenty-two student class size average. That's what that slide sixteen talks to. So then if we go to the next slide, seventeen, please, thank you. So for additional student support needs that are not currently in the budget, things I'm looking for is a one point oh FTE grade level teacher, that would be a grade three level teacher uh, for the uptick in students. An offset of this, and this is Dr. Prue alluded to this, is, um, a reduction of a one point oh FTE special education teacher, which is currently an unfilled position at KIS. The second thing here is a one point oh phys ed teacher. And again, Dr. Prue alluded to this earlier. That could potentially be covered by the reduction of the one point oh FTE behaviorist as we're moving over the programs from Silver Lake programming into Kingston budget. What we were talking about earlier with the, the music teachers, um, I would like to add a point six FTE music teacher to make a one point oh full-time music teacher, um, at KIS. And then just to note here, a point two FTE add, potential ELL add. Um, if, it's pending if Halifax and Plimpton hire a part-time EL. We currently have point two EL staff that is, um, working in Halifax and Plimpton, so pending what Halifax and Plimpton do, we would, Kingston, we would gain that point two EL staff member back. So looking at total values here, the asks of this slide are totaling about a hundred and seventy thousand. Potential offsets equate about a hundred and thirty thousand, um, which would look for a net of forty thousand, uh, dollar change.
Andy, I have a question, so I, I, I see the rationale for the one point, for the full-time presumably third grade teacher.
Mm-hmm.
Are you asking for a second physical education teacher?
Yes.
So two PE teachers?
Correct, yeah.
Can you, so we'd be, can you tell us the rationale?
Yes, I can. Um, so currently we have five specialists and five specialists are, uh, they take students, they can only take students from five classrooms at a time. So my grade levels are split up as to when the students go to their specialists. So my plan and what I'm asking for is to add with the PE teacher and a full-time music teacher, it would be, it would equate adding two specialists, which would then be able to house the students to have common planning times across grade levels. So with common planning times for all staff to be able to collaborate, to be able to have administrative time, uh, in the contract, we're allowed out of a ten-day period, one administrative common planning time. To have common planning times around assessment and around collaboration, um, would enhance the education of the students.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna, can I just ask one more question then I'll turn it over to you?
Certainly.
So, um, I'm not a principal, I recognize the awesome responsibility of being a principal. The, could the money for that full-time PE teacher benefit the school better if we were to maybe push those funds into hiring an additional special education teacher?
Potentially.
Yeah, so I know, and I'm not speaking for the committee, we are, we pass a responsible budget predicated on, um, the needs of the district, right? So I would, I'd like to hear maybe a little bit more around why you'd, you'd request, um, the PE over maybe another position, but, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Jean and then I might come back to you, go ahead.
Sure.
I had an epiphany while you were talking and kind of what that was, was that at KES, we have three grades with eight current classrooms, which is a total of twenty-four classes that are rotating through the specialists. One of which is currently part-time music, but art and PE and technology.
Library technology.
Right, this library for, thank you, Ms. Raynard. Rotate through those twenty-four classrooms. At KIS, there are currently twenty-seven, projected twenty-eight if we approve the full-time teacher, which is at least four more classrooms that are projecting, or that are rotating through the same amount of specialists. So by Mr. Materna's proposal, essentially we're looking to fill schedule space for those children to continue to have their specialists on the correct rotation and help some of the schedule impacts of twenty-eight classroom teachers. Does that make sense? That's what I was realizing, the difference in amount of classrooms when you were talking, that's what I meant by epiphany.
So there are some scheduling implications as well that I'm working through with the scheduling committee around, you know, where we're looking at if this, if this does happen, our schedule's gonna look different than if we maintain five specialists. So with the scheduling implications and the potential impact that it would have, we're preparing for both scenarios for a new schedule to launch in September.
Okay, Megan?
I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this. So in your proposal for the funding of the grade level teacher, you also have it offset as the reduction of one full-time special education teacher. I don't know, can you say, like, where would that special education teacher come from? I understand if the position is unfilled right now, but that doesn't necessarily equate to unnecessary? So I'm just trying to kind of get a picture on that and then my secondary question is, is that request supported by Dr. Panerisi?
So we currently have our Silver Lake programs, we have two DLC programs. We have two full-time DLC teachers. One of those positions is currently unfilled, but filled with a one, or it is filled with a teacher, but as an LTS, so it's a one-year LTS.
Long-term sub.
It's a long, I'm sorry.
And was that, long-term sub, was that budgeted as a one-year position or were you just unable to fill it?
It's budgeted as a one-year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
The school is also going from four sub-separate classrooms because currently we have a structured learning environment, a language-based class and two DLCs. And we would have two language-based classrooms and one DLC next year. So there is one less sub-separate teacher that we need. That position is remained unfilled right now because it's filled by, you know, the long-term sub. So that is the actual teacher, it does, it's not a real person right now. It's just a position that's held, open.
May I follow up on that because of student transitions to the middle school? And that's the reason one of those programs needs to go away?
Right, right now enrollment doesn't warrant two DLC classrooms and a closer look at the students' IEPs see that the best services for the students in light of their disability would be a language-based classroom. So we're shifting some of the, the students over to a more appropriate type of classroom.
Okay, um, go ahead, Megan.
But wouldn't we still, if the deep, one DLC classroom moves over to become another language-based, you would still need a teacher? Like there's still.
Right, we have, well, we have four teaching positions in the budget, right?
Right.
But we only, we're only gonna need three of them.
But won't we still have four classrooms, the SLC?
No, we'll only, no.
So what will, what will be the special education classrooms next year?
The special education classrooms will be truly sub-separate classrooms. Right now what we have is we have sub-separate classrooms, but they actually act as a, as a, as inclusion. So the students are never in there all day long, which is fine, that's great. But then we should just put our students in inclusion and support our students in inclusion and not say that they're in a sub-separate because that's not the type of educational environment that they're receiving. If we have a student that requires that level of service and that level of intervention, that they require a sub-separate every day, all day and just go out for specials or lunch or something, that's a whole different story. So when we looked at all the student profiles, looked at all of the IEPs, looked at the actual needs of the student, we only really have three classrooms of students that by the least restrictive environment, we would say need this type and this level, okay, of intervention. All the other students are functioning quite well in inclusion.
Okay.
With supports, so there's no need to have all these sub-separate classrooms if kids are going in and they're learning with their peers and they're receiving modifications and they're supported. It's only when they're not supported that we have to worry and say, is it because this learning environment isn't right or it's because there's not enough support in the inclusion setting?
Right, okay, so, but for, just for clarification, for next year, there would be two learning-based classrooms?
Two language-based classrooms.
Language, sorry, thank you, uh, one DLC?
And one DLC.
And what about the SLC?
Those children are totally included right now.
So that, would that program cease to exist?
That program would cease to exist. I can't, I, I would have no students to go in there because nobody has a behavior to that extreme or would need that type of restrictive setting.
So is that, okay, so is that the position that would open up to?
Yes, that's, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can move them around.
That's the long-term sub that's not filled because there's no students going into that.
Yeah.
Right, okay, so here's, here's where I'm gonna give you a little pushback, um, Mr. Materna, because I've spoken with families specifically about special education. And am I correct that we have one special ed liaison for a, an entire grade?
Yes.
Okay. And students with, um, SLD, reading, math, writing are primarily being serviced by paraprofessionals within the classroom, is that correct?
I don't know if primarily is the correct word, but paraprofessionals are supporting those students in inclusive settings.
So based on hearing from families, based on my knowledge of education and hearing the way you're answering those questions, I would be more inclined with supporting an additional special education teacher than an additional gym teacher. Because I see, um, I see a need for, uh, this, would you agree that there's an increase in SLD diagnoses over the past few years?
There has been an increase in specific learning disability, specifically in the area of reading, which requires a structured reading program.
Yeah.
Those programs are scientifically based, they require a very small student-to-teacher ratio.
Yeah.
And.
And if it's done right, it works like Novocain.
We get progress and if we identify that it is a specific learning disability and not maybe a processing issue, then yes, we can make some great gains. My principal makes decisions based on his building needs and I support him, um, so.
Okay.
Yep.
If I, if I may.
Yeah, please.
Just interject, um, I do wanna remind the committee that we're looking at the wish lists of the principals right now currently. These are, these things are not included in next year's budget that while Dr. Prue mentioned looks good for Kingston, we looked at a thirty-seven point nine percent budget increase the other day for Silver Lake. So there is going to need to be a lot of work done to get these budgets to where they need to be and these are wishlist items, so I just wanna, I guess, maybe respectfully continue with the presentation and then have a discussion about the budget overall because I don't, whether we're requesting a gym teacher or a special education teacher, which I believe there could be an argument made for both, um, I think that it, right now it's, they're both wishlist items, so we could hear the rest first before we. Thank you, sorry.
Well, if, if anyone has questions, I think it's important you ask and.
I, I agree, but I, I just don't wanna get too far on tangent about something that's not included in next year's budget. Yes.
No, I, I think it's important we don't get caught in the weeds, but if someone has a question, please feel free to, to ask.
Understood.
Okay, go ahead, Andy.
And I appreciate the feedback as well.
Okay.
These asks, um, are supported by the goal number one and goal number two of the strategic initiatives around building relationships and communicating, um, and creating opportunities for our students to have high expectations on research-based and effective strategies. Does anybody have any final questions?
I'm, if there are no questions, I'm gonna ask, um, Assistant Superintendent Lynch to speak to English language learners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy.
Just wanna supplement a little bit about what, what Mr. Materna talked about with the, um, English learner education. So currently, as of this month, we have eighty-three Kingston students who receive English learner services. And we, um, through the budget work two years ago, we have two Kingston ESL teachers. One is assigned to K two, the other serves grades three through six. Um, and we, that structure is based on student need and the recommendations from DESI. So this slide, the next slide is just a review of how students are identified. They complete a home language survey, uh, when they enroll in school. Uh, in January and February, all English learners, uh, take the access test, which gives them a level, a level with reading, writing, speaking and listening. Um, and then based on that score, they may have a recommended two periods per day of, um, ESL instruction or one period. That's what's on the next slide, it says, uh, which students are foundational, which students are transitional. says which students are foundational, which students are transitional with their WEDA levels, and that's the assessment that they take. Where I've asked the ESL teachers to do an analysis, and I wanted to share just with the committee that at this point where at KIS and KES, we are not meeting the recommended minutes for students in twenty-three, twenty-four. We have, in the last four years, our English learner population has gone from forty to eighty-three. So I wanted to share that. I do think there's, and this is slide twenty-two, I do think that there are ways, there are some considerations, and we just wanted to put them on the table. Like Mr. Maturna said, there's, if Halifax were to approve the addition of a .5 ESL teacher, that would restore a .2 back to Kingston, which would provide more time to provide those services to students. We also have received some funding in Kingston because of the opening of the Emergency Assistance Shelter. Not every English learner is a student associated with the Emergency Assistance Shelter, but potentially we could use some of that support funding to provide professional development or expand services for our multilingual learners. So that's another potential. And also through the expansion of English learners, in our district, for the first time, Kingston qualified for Title III, which is a federal entitlement grant to support efforts at supporting English learners. Obviously, it's not enough money to support a full-time teacher, but it can be valuable professional development or contract services. So we just wanted to share that, where we stand in relation to English learners in the budget.
Please, go ahead.
About eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars, while it seems fairly insignificant?
Oh, sorry, Jean, Mike.
I'm sorry.
Not Mike Chican, microphone.
The, the eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars, while it seems fairly insignificant to the total budget, do we know what that .2, maybe this is a question for Sarah, do we know what that .2 difference is if Halifax does vote their position into the budget? Would that offset that .2, being that it's kind of directly related?
So, so right now, that .2 position is being paid for by Kingston and then reimbursed, reimbursed by Halifax?
But do we underst, do we know how much, I'm sorry, do we know how much that is, though? Because then the reason I'm asking is because that eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-six could offset that .2 increase that Kingston has. So because, you know, just, if it's a sixty-five thousand, that sounds actually pretty accurate. So, that was just, just something I wanted to point out, because-
So it's, it would be thirteen thousand that we, so it's almost.
So it'd almost offset that increase. Thank you.
Yes.
And is that every year, the eleven thousand? Or is it just?
This is the first year we, this is the first year we've qualified. I would, I would roughly expect that if our population remains where it is, that we would expect to receive that. But entitlement grants come out every, every year. They're not guaranteed, but typically they're in the same range.
Okay.
So, we recognize that we don't have all of the pieces of this bigger, partially regionalized puzzle. We can't put that together for you visually until all four of the preliminary budgets have been created. Unlike a fully regionalized district or a single district, we have to present four separate budgets. We prepare four separate budgets, and then we also need to prepare the assessments as well. So once we have additional information, we should be able to more visually show you where money is going and where it came out of. Recognizing that Kingston did not present a level-funded budget, there are increases to the Kingston budget that are cloaked by certain pieces, certain expenses being taken out and given to Silver Lake. So, and we can't really parse that out for you at this time, but we're working on ways to present that so that it's clear to the community that basically we're talking about money that we have expended in the past with some increases, whether they be contractual increases or increases mandated by student needs, whether they increases because we noticed we spent more on floor wax last year, right? Those increases are in there, but they're not showing up in, in this presentation because we have removed so much from the Kingston budget that's going to Silver Lake.
If I could just speak, Mr. Chair. In, in the school committee packet is a report, which is the FY25 budget, and I know that you're gonna do homework over the next few weeks and read that thoroughly. I wanted to point out that on the right-hand column, the percent difference, those percents, the final percent in the bottom right-hand corner is correct, but all the other percents aren't correct. So for example, in the legal fees, there's clearly an increase, but the report tells us there's a thirty percent decrease. So please ignore those percents. I will share a spreadsheet with you, a printout of the spreadsheet that will have the correct percentages. I just didn't know that those were wrong until just tonight.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Prue or any of the other central office administrators? Okay. Thank you. We know this is a very busy time of, oh, Michael, did you have a question? We know this is a very busy time of year, and it can be thankless at times. So please know that we recognize how hard you're working to put forth a responsible and student-centered budget. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item eight, reporting from standing committees. Does anyone have anything as we go through administrative review? Okay, thank you. Bylaw? Thank you. Pilgrim Area Collaborative.
We did meet on January fourth, and the purpose of that meeting was really for them to introduce the draft collaborative agreement that's being updated, hasn't been updated since 2013. So stay tuned to that one.
All right. Thank you. Union thirty-one, Jean?
Yes, there is a meeting on February eighth, and I believe we're gonna be looking at the shared cost drafts.
Another, another spirited meeting. All right. Negotiations, Megan and Jean?
Nothing current.
All right, thank you. Budget advisory, as, as we've heard people say in the past, we've been advised. Facility oversight? All right, thank you. And policy technology. Mike, is there anything you wanted to speak to in any of the policies?
Nothing new on the policies. Today is the second meeting for these policies. So unless there's any initial questions, I'll make a motion to waive the actual reading of the second, eight, the second reading of these eleven policies.
I can second that motion. Any discussion before a possible vote?
Do we have to read the policies by?
Yes, when I make a motion. So if there's, if there's nothing, so I'll make a motion to have the Kingston School Committee adopt the following eleven policies: BEDH, GBEBCD, IGB, IHAMA, IHBF, IHBG, IHBH, IJ, IJ-R, ILD, and JLC.
Friendly Amendment?
Go ahead, go ahead, Megan.
I don't, I didn't catch BCAFG, the second one, second one.
Oh, EC AFG.
And, all right, thank you. Good catch, Megan. Dr. Prue, did you have a question in particular to that policy?
No, I just wanted to point out that it had been skipped in the line. I didn't know if there was a reason for it.
No.
Okay.
I don't think we had that all the time, actually.
So we, we've got them there. All right. So there was a motion to waive the first reading, and they've been read in their policy form. So is there a motion to take, for a vote to approve all of these policies?
I think that was the next motion. I'll second it.
Second it? All right, let's do a roll call vote to approve these. A yes vote indicates approval. Mr. Chican?
Yes.
Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Arietta?
Yes.
And Timothy Lewis is a yes. Thank you. Any unfinished business from previous meetings anyone like, would like to address? Thank you. Any new business? Approval of bill schedule?
On, on January eighth, there are new signs, digitally twelve warrants, total in eight hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
All right, thank you. Agenda item twelve, any other matters unforeseen at time of posting? Okay. All right, before we adjourn, just a couple of dates to be mindful of. We have our public budget hearing, which will be held here on February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a joint meeting scheduled for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We will all be enjoying our winter vacation on February nineteenth through the twenty-third. Hopefully, our skiers can get some time away. And we have an in-service day for teachers on March fifth, and that is the date of our, March, School Committee meeting, March fifth. All right. Any other questions, common concern before we adjourn?
Just a concern, is there, Dr. Prue, is there an issue with the School Committee meeting falling, falling on a, an in-service day? That's not an issue for our administrators, right? Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you. We covered a lot of ground. Thank you to the committee and to our central office folks and our guests. We are in a position to adjourn if there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote to adjourn. Yes means we leave happily. Michael?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Timothy, yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.